We stand for the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
I just cut it off, I don't know where's all of this. Thank you, that's my fault, I'm sorry. I'd like to have an accepted motion, entertain a motion to go into the executive session. Discussion of personnel matters pending litigation.
I'm sorry, so moved. Second.
All right, it was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Todd. Madam clerk, please call the row.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Here.
Motion is carried. All right, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Madam clerk.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Zupan?
Yes, here.
Here.
Motion is carried. Public comment, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. The mic is open. State your name for the record.
My name is Robert Weir. Robert Weir, W-I-P-R. I want to commend the village on what I saw on Saw Trail, the trimming back of the dead limbs of those big old trees. And while I'm commending the village, I'm also saying I would like you to look at your priorities. Every day, I take my four-year-old son to Wagler School, and I walk down Olivia, and there are four huge trees there with their limbs over the sidewalk and over the street. And when the ice comes and they fall on us, we'll all lament the tragedy. I suggest that we look at those around the schools as being a high priority item. I thank you for your consideration of this, I know it will be as important to you as it is to me.
Thank you, sir, I just have one question. You said Olivia and Saw Trail?
Olivia and Wagler School, I don't know the name of the street.
Oh, okay, Olivia took 15.
I was only commending you for what was done on Saw Trail.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hey, my name is Jackie Blais, I have several very not important questions, which is questions, I would like to know why the speed limit is 20 miles an hour throughout the village except between Torrance and Murphy Avenue on 223rd Street. It's 25. I'd like to know why, why are there no other one-way streets except for Orion to Torrance from 221st? I would like to know why the streets on Yates, when the streets on Yates and Clyde on the south side, when they dug up the streets and there's the horses, and the horses are in the streets, and the grass is growing in the streets, and there's big lumps, what are those going to be fixed? I would like to know if, why do you don't do like other communities and suspend trick-or-treating door-to-door and just have the junker treats? Other communities have done it, it's much safer for the children. Now, I was asked by the library to present these books to you.
Thank you so very much.
And let's go to the library.
Okay. Question for 20, 25 miles an hour versus 20, to be honest with you, I have no idea. I would just guess that when it gets to Murphy and going east, that there's a thoroughfare, I'm not, I really don't know, I can't even answer that one.
It's from Torrance to Murphy.
Oh, you mean going to Cap Coral?
Torrance to Murphy.
Correct, that's down to 23rd Street.
To east, it's all 25 miles an hour.
Okay, I have to try, I have to look into that. I've been out here a long time and...
I've asked a question before and never got an answer.
Okay, well, you'll get one, but I can't give you one tonight. Yates and Clyde, if that was recently dug up, then those are going to be taken care of hopefully before the winter sets in. If it's a long fix, then it may be something else wrong, they may have to put another part in there. But I did talk to Kevin Weller, and they're trying to get these homes that we did dig up because of water main breaks to be, to get fixed. So I don't know how long that one is, but I did write that down. No trick-or-treat or, I'm sorry, trick-or-treat versus trunk-or-treat, and you said the community is doing that.
They're suspending the trick-or-treat from house to house.
That's what I'm saying, trick-or-treat versus trunk-or-treat. So trick-or-treat would be door-to-door, trunk-or-treat is in a special location. Right now, it's too late to try to do that, but that's something that we can take into consideration, and I'll put, I'll put something out to the community and let them write back their preference. That'll be a good flyer to put out, which one would you rather have, trick-or-treat or trunk-or-treat.
If the town does it, the churches can all do it?
I'm just saying, that's something that, you know, we can, I'll put out, I'll put it out to the, to the residents and ask them which would be their pleasure. Because basically, that's, some of the residents enjoy trick-or-treat because they like to decorate their homes and what the kids come to. So, I'm just saying, but I will put that out there.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more? Okay. Thank you. Moving on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proceedings, the minutes for the committee of the whole of July 18, 2017. Second. It was moved by trustee, um, trustee Todd, second by trustee Jones, any questions? Madam clerk?
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
No.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
No.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the general proceeding of the regular board meeting for October 10th, 2017.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, brain is gone, and second by trustee Brewer, I'm sorry, trustee Todd, it's just my brain. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Tate?
No.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
No.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, reports of corporate offices, on the mayor's report, today I just have a few things. One, yesterday I had a meeting with the pastors of the village, and we agreed to meet on a quarterly basis, and they agreed to, and we all agreed to get involved more and concentrate at the very beginning now with our youth. And with our youth, and with jobs for the village. So that's something that we, we've concentrated, we want to concentrate on, trying to set up a pre-qualification, as you would, would can say, for the businesses that are here in the village. And go to them and talk to them, and let them find out what it is that they need, and we can go, come back along with the village and along with the churches, that we can start some type of vetting process. And it seemed to go over pretty well yesterday, and for that, I'm very glad to see that the churches are willing to get involved, and I let them know that we're willing to also step up as a village, because these are all of our residents. As you know, Halloween this year is, and I'm not going to take everything away from trustee Jones, but the hours would be from, I think it's three to seven, oh, four to seven, okay, four to seven. So if there's any, if anybody has any problems, after that particular point in time, you can give the village a call, or not 911, but I think it's 311.
The general number?
The general number, 757333, okay. And, but we will have patrols out throughout the village to make sure that it goes over smoothly. And that's all that I have at this time. Village clerk, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last committee meeting, we talked about the outreach initiatives, which is the newsletter and other things that associate with reaching out to the community. What I bring before you today is discussion for consideration of the quarterly newsletter with the new name called the Saw Talk News. And we would love to present it quarterly, but if not, at least three times. And the reason why it would only be three times a year is if we do not get enough ads that would support the actual distribution by mailing. But we are hoping that we will be able to do that. I shared with you before the ad rates, and I have them before you again, well, I had the paper before you, but I didn't have the prices. The committee met along with our IT person who has some experience with ad copies and ad rates, and these are the rates that we are proposing for half-pages, quarter-pages, and eighth pages, and, and also the discount if someone was to pay for quarterly production upfront. We are willing to accept MasterCard, Visa, American Express, Discover, and definitely checks. On the backside are the ad spec sheet, which will show people the sizes of their ads and also what's required in order to submit an ad. So I will be asking that you would approve that along with the print company. We provided four companies the other day. However, after we crunched the numbers and everything, Minuteman Press was the company that turned out to be the least expensive, so that would be the company that we would want to use. And then lastly, right when we came aboard, the beginning of June, the village's USPS mail permit expired. And so the cost of that is $225 a year, and so that's really not necessarily associated with the community outreach, however, it is something that needs to be done if we are to mail the newsletters. So I guess what I'm doing at this point is I would like to ask for approval to move forward with that initiative.
I do have a question, mayor.
Trustee Zupan?
I know when we were looking at the quotes last week, we were looking at a per addition quantity of about 4,500 issues to print. I think when we were looking at multiplying that times the four, it was putting us right around or slightly over the $10,000 mark. And it's been a while, and I could be wrong, but for things 10,000 and greater, don't we have to put that out for bid?
Yes.
Unless we would have to have a resolution or something to not put something out for bid.
Well, there could be, you can vote to have it not put out, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking in terms of depending on what that number is, we're right around that threshold of having to have formal bids put out.
What is around 10,000? What's...
Each edition, each edition with the actual printing of the newsletter as well as the mailing, we've come to about $3,000.
Okay.
Less than three.
So you're asking to have a, to publish a quarterly newsletter with at least three of the proposed avenues of engagement and ad, I mean, well, ad rates is different, but is this over 10,000?
We don't project it to be over 10,000 total.
Okay. Could you, could, is this a matter that has to be voted on right away? Because when we vote out, I would like to vote out the amount, so we don't, in other words, we can vote out up to X amount, and that would probably be better than to just vote this out and not know the numbers.
I think that we would be somewhat hard-pressed to push it to the middle of November simply because we need the letters and the ad information to go out to potential advertisers, because we are shooting for the first issue taking place in, in January.
Okay, the ad, the ads is one thing, but when, because there's no, there's no cost for the village for ads. I'm asking for a number that has to be voted on. We just can't vote on something without the number stating that we won't go over X amount.
If we do not have ads, then those would only be printed. No, if we do not have sufficient ads, we will not print the entire 4,500. That's when they will be placed on the email system, the website, and social media. We will only actually print at a printer if we have sufficient funds to pay for the printing and the mailing.
That's what I was asking, is there a, a number associated with this, a X amount of money that we have to pay for printing, ads or something that's going to happen?
Yes.
I just need to know, the board needs to know how much money they're going to vote out, that's what trustee Zupan...
And with the printing, it's not going to be the 10,000, simply because one, we basically calculated about 3,000 for each edition, but 1,000, a little over 1,000 would go for the mailing of them. So a printer would not take a bid, give us a bid, we wouldn't need the bid from the printer, because it's not going to take us over the $10,000 amount.
Okay, so my question to you is, is there, do you have a number?
I do have the numbers, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I don't have it here with me in the packet, because I did have all of those numbers in the meeting packet this past week.
We had three of the four, right? The fourth one you...
You had four.
The last, okay, I thought it was three, sorry.
Yet you had, you had four. One of them was black and white, and we definitely did not want black and white.
Any other questions?
So, could you clarify, what are we saying, that it is over 10,000, or it may be a...
It's not going to be over 10,000.
For the complete year?
For the complete year, for the mailing, no, for the printing, it will not be over $10,000 a year.
The cost itself for the entire process will be, but printing will be 8,000, mailing will be 4,000.
But if we look at this as a total package, printing and mailing, then we exceed the $10,000 mark.
But that, you're okay though, because the printing is what my concern was, and if, if it's 8,000, we're okay.
The printer could not give us a bid for the entire 12,000, because they're not doing the mailing. The mailing is separate.
Could we have, could we have the printer to actually mail them?
We could do that. We looked at that as a possibility as well.
And...
And Minuteman came out the best.
See, I'm thinking of cost efficiency, if the printer prints and mails that product in-house, then it's not passed on to us for mailing.
Well, if we go with Minuteman Press, for them to do the mailing, we would pay 18 cents a piece that they would mail out, in addition to the 38 cents per that the post office would charge.
What we can do, and, because I still need to see numbers, and the most important thing, where we're going to pull this from.
There is no place to pull it from. This should be totally self-sufficient, we are not expecting any funds...
But you ask us to vote money out.
No, we're really not asking you to vote money out, we're asking for approval to move forward with developing a newsletter that should be totally contained based on collecting ads.
Okay.
We're not asking money...
So here's my motion. I move we proceed with the publication of a quarterly newsletter to be published via the village website, the email e-news, the Facebook outlets that we have, and ads permitting mail, US Post Office.
That sounds very good.
I hear a second.
Second.
I was moved by trustee Zupan, that we move forward, that we, that the board moves forward in securing a newsletter, a quarterly newsletter, emails, and Saw Talk and website with no cost to the village. Are there any questions? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Yay!
Motion is carried.
Okay, I have a couple of other things on my report, it's not going to take this long, and one of them is, you know that I have been giving, sharing four-year requests, and I decided that it was best that we go monthly with the four-year request opposed to every meeting that we have. I also told you that in August, we had not one four-year request, and that was really good. However, moving into September, we had quite a few. One day, we had 14 at one time, then we had one person, one, two, three, four, five, one person submitted six four-year requests in, between September 12th and October the 9th, and it was quite extensive, but we have answered to the great disability that we have, however it is with the Attorney General's office as well. Another request was for financial documents, code violations, we had one person to submit two, she wanted bank statements from 2012 to the present dealing with the Sea and Railroad Project. So all of our four years have been responded to, to the best of our ability. Other, two things that I have, one, on the back table, there's the holiday cheer giveaway that we're planning, and those boxes should be in the hallways, you know, starting Monday, and we will be collecting foods, non-perishable foods, and we are hoping to give away 150 holiday baskets on December the 16th tomorrow. Hopefully, I'll see each of you here, and I'm still reaching out on Facebook, and Commissioner Rogers from the Commissioner Board of Review, he's been lighting Facebook up with the notifications for a property tax appeal forum that's going to be here, that we will be hosting tomorrow night.
So we're fine.
And that starts at 6:30. Lastly, I just want to share with you all, everyone, my mobile number is 708-921-3662. I'm going to say that again, because I don't see very many people writing, and I really would like for you to write it down, so that you can use it. Again, it is 708-921-3662. And when you communicate with me via email, can you send that to sbclerk@sawvillage.org? I would greatly appreciate it. And, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to back up, I forgot to put into the record the collector's report, so I want to read the collector's report from August and September of this year. For the month of August, property taxes, $2,451,038.71. Other taxes, $222,730.69. License and permits, $13,818.88. Fees and services, $218,863.74. Grants, $1,048.51. Miscellaneous, $41,318.73. For a total of $4,610,424.91. Okay, for the month of September, the collector's report reads as follows, property tax, $22,788.86. Other taxes, $228,072.32. License and permits, $8,024.17. Fees and services, $257,890.67. Grants, $2,684.39. Transfers, $554,050. And miscellaneous, $60,429.36. For a total in the month of September, $1,133,890.27. Okay, on to village engineer report, Mr. Jim Zarney.
Thank you, Mayor. Would like to give you an update on the 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue Street Rehabilitation Project. IDOT has approved the engineering agreement, and we are proceeding with Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering, which are the study and design phases of the project. The total estimated cost of the project is $754,000. The federal funding will pay for $604,000 of the project costs, and Cook County will pay for $75,000 of the cost, leaving the remaining $75,000 to be paid for by the village using MFT funding, so a pretty good bargain. The projected project schedule is as follows, contract document approval by IDOT in April of 2018. Contract document approval by IDOT in April of 2018. Bid opening in June of 2018. Construction start in August of 2018, and construction should be complete by November of 2018. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarney. Is that part of that grant that we got, the seventy-five thousand, that grant that we got from the state? The first seventy-five?
From Cook County, Invest in Cook.
Invest in Cook.
Okay.
And I think they're gonna put a sign up when they do that. They've done it a lot of times.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of staff. In Chief Staff Reagan's stead, we have Dennis Sinnerwick, Captain Dennis Sinnerwick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past two weeks, the fire department responded to twenty-two calls. We had ten fire alarms, one box alarm, two COs, two gas leaks, two vehicle accidents, one electrical fire, one neutral aid, one ambulance assist, one missing person, and one on the fire. During Fire Prevention Week, the Fire Prevention Bureau went to all three schools giving talks on fire prevention and showing off our new addition to the fire department, fire safety trailers. This was shown to the children and to the teachers. The feedback was great. We were glad to see people come out to the open house to spite the bad weather. With the changing weather, please have your furnaces checked, change your batteries in your smoke, and CO detectors. We're also pleased to announce that we have sold our old fire truck to a fire department in Dawson, Texas. Pickup date will be on November 11th. That concludes my report.
And did you, I think you got almost everything you asked for, correct?
Yes.
That's rare. It took them, took them, what, a year or so?
He hesitated before he answered that question.
Well, I think it's five hundred and... You can. I mean, that's good to brag on. I mean...
We were asking, we had enlisted with a vendor for used fire trucks for twenty-five thousand. They offered us twenty-two. We agreed on twenty-three.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you. Also, I'm sure the trustee's gonna mention it, but the, I think the trailer's gonna be at truck treat, correct? The trustee won't be here. I'm sure he's gonna like it. Thank you. Police Department Report, Chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. The past two weeks, we had four hundred and fifty-six calls for service with seven arrests. Few cases of interest. On October 13th, our K-9 officer conducted a traffic stop with the use of our K-9 Felco. Officer found the driver to be in possession of a substantial amount of cocaine, heroin, marijuana, prescription medicine, and cash. Driver was charged accordingly, and this matter is now in the Cook County Court System. On October 18th, officers were called by Cook County Sheriff's Department in Fort Heights that they had a shooting victim from our town. Victim explained the shooting occurred on the 1700 block of 225th Street, Salt Village. Said he was leaving a party in the area when unknown subject shot at his vehicle and ended up striking him in the shoulder. Once the victim heard the shots, he drove from the area, realizing afterwards that he was struck in the shoulder. Victim had three other passengers in the car who heard the shots but didn't see anything. Victim was taken to hospital. Officers went back to the scene and collected shell casings for evidence. This is now an ongoing investigation. On that same date, prior to the previous incident that I reported on, a house at the 225th, at 225th and Jeffrey reporting having been shot at several times. One resident in the house was injured while they were diving for cover. The only description reported to officers on the scene was that there were two male black subjects dressed in their clothing running from the scene. Again, evidence was collected at the location. This matter is also pending. As mentioned earlier, hours for truck treat this year will be between four and seven on Tuesday, October 31st. And Mayor, since there is such an interest, I will do a comprehensive report, the type of calls that we receive during those hours, and report at the next board meeting. Last but not least, prescription drug drop-off. The quarterly DEA prescription drug drop-off will be held again on October 28th, this coming Saturday, between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM in the lobby of Salt Village Police Department. We're asking that anyone who would like to dispose of their unwanted prescription drugs, feel free to use this opportunity to do so. This will be the fourth time we participate in this prescription, prescription drug drop-off. To date, we have collected over one hundred pounds of unwanted prescription drugs. We'll continue to participate in future drop-offs since DEA has reported these collections have helped prevent pills, pill abuse, and theft from ridding homes of the potentially dangerous expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs. This service is free and anonymous, and no questions are ever asked. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Vavri.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. In the last two weeks, EMA has responded to nine, nine calls. We had one stove fire, one electrical fire, one CO alarm, two fire alarms, one accident, one missing person. We had two AOAs. We have one to South Holland for the traffic control for the parade of lights in honor of the fallen firefighters. We also had an AOA to Crete for an electrical fire. We did traffic control with them. We attended our SMART meeting in Crown Point, Indiana, found out about some new training classes coming up, and we're gonna look at attending those. And last but not least, we are still looking for volunteers to join our department to help out. Also too, we will be out doing truck treat with the Village and also doing street patrols for Halloween.
Community Development Director Sherry Juzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Code enforcement has a total of four hundred and forty-eight tickets on the court call for November 1st. I continue to update the vacant list every day and provide the updated list to the garbage company on a weekly basis. I have assisted trustee Tate's with information on vacant properties for the land bank project, and we are continuing working on a date that is available for a hearing for the closure of C. James Auto. We will keep you updated on that process. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Joseph Wizwani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, we've been officially notified that Salt Village's application for the 2018 local technical assistance program was approved by CMAP. Each of the trustees received a copy of this letter in their mailbox, and this is for the update for the comprehensive plan. Work on the Plaza Place improvements in TIF 4 are ongoing. Mr. Panos looks forward to completing the project very soon. The village engineering firm completed a pro forma boundary survey for the property that the village is under contract to sell. The buyers engineer should begin their work, including a proposed site plan, so that they can begin the process of making applications to Metropolitan Water Reclamation District and the Cook County Highway Department for permits before they move forward. This process is expected to take several months. The buyers wanted to close in the spring of 2018 on the property. Last week, I attended the 2017 Transportation and Logistics Conference in Oakbrook. I was glad to have made several contacts, including reconnecting with Brian Quigley, formerly with Dermody Partners. The Chicago Southland Development Corporation had a booth representing all four enterprise zones. Salt Village, along with the villages of Matson, Moni, and Cook County, were there proudly representing the Southland. Reggie Greenwood was a panelist for the conference and spoke about development and construction trends in the Southland. A lot of good information was taken away from the conference in terms of how we will be formulating a new marketing approach. It was good to hear from many of the professionals there that industrial development is now the new commercial development. Supply chain management will have our full attention as we move forward with marketing strategies for Salt Village. There will be a tax increment financing district joint review board meeting here on Thursday, October 26th, beginning at 10:00 AM in Village Hall. Finally, the CDS, CSBDC is hosting their quarterly forum tomorrow in Alseb. I, along with the mayor, will be representing the village. That's all I have.
Thank you. Reports of trustees in standing committees, Public Service Committee trustee Bernice Brewer.
No, no report.
Budgeted Finance Committee trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say that the Budget Finance Committee will have their meeting this Thursday, right here in the rotunda at seven o'clock. Next one, I'd like to mention that this past Friday, I was able to meet with Mohan, the department heads, pretty much give an update on how they are doing compared to the budget so far. And I would like to say that police, fire, and community development were all four below where they need to be as far as the budget for this point in time, which is five months into the budget. So that's good to hear. And we have another meeting in January as an update, and probably we'll be the last one before the new budget in next, you know, April, or maybe sometime in Paris. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Housing and Governmental Relations Committee trustee Cecil Tate. Oh, I'm sorry. I back, I back up. I don't know why I had to... Parks and Rec and Youth Services trustee Kelvin Jones.
Rain? Cold? Hot? Dry, sunny. The truck or treat will go on. So just prepare for any repositioning of the truck or treat. If it's pouring down, we'll go inside the community center, as we did a couple of years ago, and set some tables up, decorate the tables, kinda play it by ear, and we'll still have a good time. And that'll be this Saturday from 12:00 to 3:00, give or take candy gone or people gone. But it will, we will go on, and I look forward to seeing everyone there. Fires are pretty much around everywhere, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Now, Housing and Governmental Relations Committee trustee Cecil Tate.
Mr. Mayor, we're still working on identifying homes that we can submit as abandoned homes. There's a process that we need to go through legally to declare the homes abandoned and then take possession of those homes and rehab them or demolish them, whatever we're going to do with them. But there's a process that we need to go through as far as determining delinquent taxes, delinquent water bills. So that's taking a lot longer than I anticipated, but I last looked and there were over three hundred homes. We probably will not get through all of those homes. We want to test the system out. And by testing the system out, I propose that we're gonna submit three, thirty homes, thirty homes, to see how the system works and is it beneficial for us to be involved. As I stated earlier, this is at no cost to the village upfront. There will be fees incurred later on, but we can reimburse those. Once the home, the home is sold, then the village will have to pay back or reimburse the benefactor who starts the whole process. So there's no out-of-pocket money for us. It's only if the home is sold and we get money from that, that we then reimburse the fees that have been incurred. Now, those fees will include naturally attorney fees because we need to go to court for the court to declare a home abandoned. So there are attorney fees involved. But again, those are the fees that will be incurred by the initial intake. And that in addition to, if it's decided we're going to rehab a home or homes, if it's decided we're gonna rehab them, then that money also is due for reimbursement. But as of right now, system untried, as of right now, we're going to reimburse based upon selling those homes. And again, if the thirty homes don't move, then we'll have to start thinking of doing something different in order to deal with our housing situation in Salt Village. To have this many vacant homes is a little alarming, but a lot of other communities have vacancies also. But I'm concerned about Salt Village. We have a lot of vacant homes. We have homes that are vacant, but there's squatters in them. That's what we're gonna call on the police department to assist us with that issue of squatters being in the homes. Now with winter right around the corner, it's gonna be interesting what's gonna happen from here on out. But we're still compiling information to submit on the home issue. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Orders Review Committee trustee Linda Thibault.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our committee met yesterday, and we are working on an ordinance or amending the ordinance for false alarms, burglar alarms, things like that. We project it's gonna take us a couple of months because there's some things that we have to do as far as we need to find out who has alarms in their home. There's a form to fill out, but I'll get back with the details. Our next ordinance review committee meeting will be November 30th at 6:30 PM. I've changed it from Monday to Thursdays because it's more convenient. So we've decided on Thursdays, and that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Thibault. Public Safety Committee trustee Bev Zupan.
Thank you. Our committee will be meeting next Wednesday, November 1st, 6:00 PM here in the rotunda. On the agenda, we'll be discussing some ideas the police chief came up with at our last meeting about different activities and forums we can have in 2018. Another item gonna be on the agenda next week is also talking about OfferUp, which is a way law enforcement partners can have a set designated location at the police department where people, if they're selling stuff on Craigslist, or if you're in a domestic dispute and you've got children that you need to hand over to an ex, that you can do so safely and have cameras there to protect both parties. So those are things that are gonna be on our agenda for next Wednesday night's meeting at 6:00 o'clock here in the rotunda. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Reports of committees and commissions, Beautification Committee Chairman trustee Linda Thibault.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Beautification Committee always decorates the Village Hall. So this year, we're going to do it, we'll usually do it after, it's the Friday after Thanksgiving. So that'll be November 24th that we will be here decorating. We are looking for volunteers to help us decorate. I've not set a time, but I will get back on what time that we will meet on that day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Senior Advisory Council Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer. Just one, please put a mic over there. Does it work? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our report for now, we're pretty much just waiting still on the policies and procedures. We do have a senior that wants to do a Midwest car plan, I guess, not turning it, but just a local car plan on the first and third Fridays. And he's requested to do that, like a little hit-whisk game or something like that. And we're asking, we're asking also, because we haven't got our calendar ready yet, but we have people like to make the request to use the senior's center. And we just kinda requested everyone, you know, let the senior advisory council know so it won't be no conflict, you know? Again, we know the village has precedence over, you know, anything, but we need to know so nothing else is scheduled before we're, you know, so we're in no conflict. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, the Midwest hasn't been on Friday, but...
Well, that's when they, the general asks for, he asked for a Friday, Friday evening.
The experts won't be there, but anyway... But anyway, um, um, I didn't say it for a joke. Um, the, you can have, still have any type of activity, that's not a problem, but you're saying that as far as bringing it out, as far as renting it out, you're still waiting on housing, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, but as far as renting it out, we definitely can't do any rentals or anything like that, of course, until we get the policies and procedures in, so we're still just waiting on the, uh, trustees to approve.
Yeah, 'cause the activities, you can have money till Friday, it's, you know, it's not a problem, that's, it's open, so, you know, um, that's, that's not a problem. But I think they're gonna be voting, as a matter of fact, that's the next thing on the agenda, to vote on the, um, policies and procedures. So...
All right. Well, does this gentleman want to have it Friday during the day, or in the evening?
In the evening.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah.
So, that goes to the rental.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Midwest is in the evening, too?
Well, Midwest is, is, yeah, a evening.
Is Midwest doing today?
No.
I just asked, not to...
I think he wants to, so, uh, we do have to, um, I guess, to have our, you know, council just vote on that also, or make a decision on that, but we would, I guess, you know, if we had the policies and procedures, we'd have.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Farmer, before he leaves. Uh, how are you doing? Uh, I know you just got into the position of senior advisory council chairperson. But, uh, in case you're not aware, some flags were ordered for the community center, and especially to replace the, the state flag over there, which is horrible. But we have a new flag in, a new state flag in, to replace that dingy old flag. My question is, do you have someone, or are you capable of setting up the two flags that are going over there? One is the American flag, and one's the State of Illinois flag.
Um, yes, I guess I'm capable of doing it, if, uh, you know, I have it before. I know it's two flags in the senior city center, uh, you know, in the, I guess, the front part of the senior center.
Correct.
Yes, and...
Yeah, when, when you first, uh, well, when, depends on where you walk, if you walk in from this side of the building, they're on the, on the left.
Yeah.
And there's a table that's there with chairs.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, it's, that whole system, when I say system, I mean, the, the stands, the poles, the flags themselves, uh, need to be replaced. I would love to see, uh, wave a magic wand and get the state flag out of there, because I think our seniors deserve to see something better than what you see when you walk over there now. Uh, but the flags, I'm, I was told just came in today, so I need to find out when you're available, or I could just have those flags set up, uh, in your office over there, and you could do it at your leisure.
That's fine. That, that's fine, no, no problem.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and also, you all are welcome. We are having, uh, our next, uh, council meeting is on the ninth of November. Uh, we start at five o'clock, so, uh, you all are invited.
Your next meeting, council, your next, uh, meeting?
Yes.
At five o'clock?
November, yes, November, uh, ninth, on the Thursday, at five o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. I will entertain a motion to adopt the policies and procedures for the Saw Village Senior Center.
Some moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee, um, Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
I only have a comment, and it's actually a concern, that per the policy, because we've been going back and forth with this, and I'd like to see it passed, actually, so things can move forward. The only concern I have is that it states that the senior advisory council board needs to be Saw Village residents, is what it states in this policy. Well, that's what it states, according to what we have here. And that's one of the things that I've said before, that I feel that on the council, that it should be a Saw Village resident, because this is what our tax dollars, we pay for that. That's the only concern I have.
Hey, your, your concern is that on the council, everybody on the council should be a Saw Village resident.
Right. And it states it in this policy.
Well, that's not what's on the council, though.
It's...
No.
Okay.
All the, all the residents, the people that are on the council, I think it's two that are not residents.
Well, that's just my concern, because that's what it states in this policy.
Well, just, so if that's your concern, then I'm just saying, that's, so you can understand what you're voting on. You're voting on the policy, the policy states one thing, but the council is actually made up of, uh, I do have the list, and there's two that are not residents of the village.
Okay.
So, that's your, uh, whatever, then, that's how you vote to reflect or not reflect. Any other questions?
To follow up on her concern, can the chair, Mr. Farmer, if you wouldn't mind answering what the...
Your, your question with the motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, you, you can't ask him to intervene on that, because you're in the, right now, this is just a question of the motion. So, he cannot, I mean, what do you...
Okay.
But it, I understand what you're saying, and that's something that, um, it can reflect or whatever have you want to make that motion, but...
So, can I ask the trustee to retract her motion until I ask my question?
I'll retract my motion.
Okay. And you can second it.
The questions come after the second, so, you have a motion on the floor, you have someone who gets seconded.
Correct.
You can ask mayor the question, then mayor, you can, or mountain dancer.
Chief wants to ask one of the residents a question that's pertaining to this motion area, which is pertaining to the, um, policy. So, in order for that to happen, she can ask, but she may rephrase the motion. So, she can ask to have the person that made the motion, and the person that made the second, to retract, and then proceed with that question. That's what I'm looking at. Would you, would you...
I retract the motion.
Would you retract the second? Bernie?
Uh.
Pardon me?
You want me to retract the second?
Yeah, because you made the second.
Well, retract the second.
You will?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, trustee, um, should've called before we said the motion, I made the motion, so trustee, you...
I'm sorry. Mr. Farmer, following up on trustee Todd's question or concern about the advisors being required to be Saw Village residents as per page four of the policy, knowing that the mayor has just stated that there are two of the advisors that are non-residents, is the council making any move to amend this document already to remove that statement about having to be a resident? Or are you going to replace those two advisors with advisors who are residents?
Now, and very sorry, I don't have a copy of it with me, but I thought there was already retracting. We had, uh, first, uh, the mayor was, uh, and I think the mayor kinda addressed that at first with us about having, uh, Saw Village, uh, residents on the council. And then we, after we talked to him and told him we had two that wasn't on the council, but, uh, we thought we really needed or really wanted on our council, that, uh, you know, he said pretty much that it, it was okay to, to, uh, not have. We thought, I thought it was actually took off of the policy and procedures, of the new one, I thought we took it off, so that's kinda, what page is that?
Page four.
Wow, okay. Yeah, we thought we, so we will be retracting that. We do want, uh, we do have two members, as the mayor stated, that's not Saw Village residents. Uh, myself, the chairman is Saw Village resident, uh, resident, uh, the assistant, my assistant chairman, or vice chairman, he's a Saw Village resident. I think our treasurer, she's not, and our village planner, event planner, she's not.
So, most of the advisors are not residents, is what you're saying?
No, they are. It's only two that's not.
Okay.
Yes, just two that's not. The event planner, and the secretary, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, see if I can clarify this. You can make the motion, however, and it, and the, it has to be changed, if you want it changed, in the policy. You can make a motion for the saying that it, either you can have all, or you don't have to have all, as a resident. So, if you want to make a motion that all of the people on the advisory board be residents, and you, and you make a motion for their policy, you can make that motion. Or you can say, I make the motion for that anyone can, doesn't have to be a resident, um, residency, uh, requirement, and I still make the motion for the, um, handbook. So, you can make them either way.
Can I clear up something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Before we go on? Uh, on page four, uh, we talked about this before, and you said, okay, uh, we went back and forward. The first, uh, it was decided that the, uh, everybody on the council had to be members, and then we changed it to, uh, members and outside of residents. But then, we decided that only the, uh, members who voted would be Saw Village residents. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Farmer, everybody who has an office, uh, who is an officer, there is a Saw Village resident, and they're the only one that has the voting, uh...
No, that's not true.
No? You said the treasurer is a resident.
The treasurer, and then the vice president, I think.
I said, uh, secretary.
Secretary.
Yes.
The advisors and your board all have voting rights. So, um, I, that's, that's what I'm, I'm saying, 'cause trustee Todd was, and made this, that's why I asked to have it retracted. So, if you'd like to change the, um, the motion to read whatever, we can vote on that. So, I can, I, what I'll say is, um, I'll entertain a motion that, since it was, we will see if, if we could do it both ways, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, or I'm sorry, to, um, adopt the policies and procedures of the, um, Saw Village Senior Center with the inclusion that all, um, voting members on the council be residents. I'll ask for a motion for that.
Has to be every, the, the voting members are, are all members of the, of the council?
The, the voting members of the, of the Saw Village, um, senior council are your officers, yes. Okay?
Well, some moved, yeah, so...
That, I...
So, that, that means that it has to be...
No, I'm saying, I'm gonna do it, first of all, I'm gonna ask this one, and that's the first one I'm asking, that all resident, all voting members of the, of the council have to be residents, and then also to adopt the policies and procedures. I'll ask for a motion again, I'll ask for a motion for that.
So, let me ask, so this has to be amended before it brings back, or we gonna vote on it today?
It's self-explanatory. I'm saying that it would have to...
No, I'm just asking you, when do you, when do you want the amendment to bring? When do you wanna...
We, trustee, we can do it one of two ways. We can vote on the, on adopting this as written, which says that all of the officers have to be residents, or we can vote to adopt it with the understanding that it will be amended so that officers do not have to be residents.
As I stated, that's why I'm asking the first one. I'll entertain that motion. If there's no one to make that motion, then it'll be lost, then I'll entertain the motion. But first of all, that's the first one. Okay, no one has said it.
Because I don't want to miss this. Um, first, can you restate that again, please? This...
Okay, I will entertain a motion that the advi- that, that the board adopts the policies and procedures for the Saw Village Senior Center, and that the people of the council, the members of the council, have to be residents.
When some move?
Okay, that motion was lost for lack of a second. The next one would be that you adopt the procedures and policies of the senior center, and that the council does not have to be residents of the village. I'll, I'll entertain that motion.
Is the caveat, the approval of the policy also is in the first one?
Yes, either one is adoption of the policy, yes, sir.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions?
So, then they'll amend this?
No, it's gonna be, it, it is what it's gonna, you just voted, it just, well, it was up and down, depending on what it is, it, it then, it is self-explanatory, so, the one that was, was, um, um, motioned was the one that's, um, that the council members do not have to be residents.
Right, so they will revise page four of the document.
Oh, that has to be, yeah, that has to be.
That's what I'm asking.
If the motion is passed, any more questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
No.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. So, I would be looking to see a revised part on that part of the, um, procedures, that the board does not have to consist of residents, because the way it was written, it does say that. Okay, new business, accounts payable on disbursements dated ten twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, in an amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. I'll entertain a motion to pay accounts payable.
Some move.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Todd. Any question?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, our H.R. person, I thought that was paid through Owens?
The...
The Owens Group?
The H.R., okay.
We pay Owens and the...
That's, that's, yes, we do pay Owens for part of that, but we're using other parts, as you can see, it was for negotiations, because we're getting ready to go into negotiations now with the police department, pretty extensive. And we have to get things together, because their, um, contract is up in April of next year. So, right now, we, we, we got to get things started, and, um, that part comes out of the part that's in the, um, budget. So, that's separate than the Owens Group, and that's something that we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to talk to the board about also, because there's some things about that, that I'm not too happy about, but we'll talk about that later, but yes.
Okay, 'cause I just see it's separate here?
Yes, it is separate, because I wanted it separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve a confidential state, I'm sorry, confidential settlement agreement between party number one and the village of Saw Village. I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by trustee, um, Zupan, seconded by trustee Jones. Any questions? I heard what I heard when I left there. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. A motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve confidential, a confidential settlement agreement between party number two and the village of Saw Village.
Did you do one?
Some move.
Second.
It was moved by trustee, um, Todd, seconded by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Comments and questions on the board of trustees, we'll start with trustee, um, you know, we'll start this one, trustee Grant.
No, no comment, Mr. Mayor. No further comment.
No comments.
No, okay, trustee, Zupan, we'll stop in the middle.
Okay, a couple things, um, clerk, Campbell Pruitt, uh, just a couple of amendments to your ad page, some on both sides. Um, secondly, uh, trustee Brewer, um, I would ask that you get with trustee Jones, even though we've approved your policy and procedures for the senior advisory council tonight, I'm still concerned that we don't have a consistent rental agreement between the community center and the senior center. I really want us to be using a consistent rental approach on those, on those two facilities.
That goes to the council now. It doesn't go to trustee...
Mr. Farmer, if you're back there, I'm addressing that to you then.
That doesn't go to the trustee, right.
I would like you to, to get with trustee Jones, um, even though we've approved the document tonight, I am concerned that the rental, uh, process for the senior center is different than the rental process for the community center. We should have one rental process for those two facilities, one in the same. So I would please ask that you work with him to make sure that that happens. And that's all I have, thank you.
Trustee Jones?
Every first Thursday of the month is Parks and Recs, Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, um, that will be November second, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM here in, in the village hall. Christmas parade, just mark your calendars, it's December ninth, and just, that's it.
Krista, trustee Tate?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to say thank you to all of the veterans that I had asked to volunteer. I had hoped to have the flags, which we're going to, which have been purchased. I had hoped to have them here and have the veterans who would then present them to, to the board and to the audience. The flags arrived today, uh, so they can, and they cannot be done. Uh, but I want to thank the vets anyway who volunteered, uh, but they will be presented on November eleventh at the veterans' celebration. Um, this will be a time for everyone to come out and see the purchase of the new flags. They could, they'll even be able to walk over to the senior center and see the two that have been purchased by the senior center. So they'll be able to see that, but more importantly, that I hope in our program, that we have time, we have a photographer that could take pictures of the different vets for the different branches, as they stand near their flag. It's the first time it's happened in Salt Village, so I think it's gonna be a historic point for them to be standing near their flag, be it the Army, Navy, Marines, or whatever, that they'd be able to stand near their flag, and that Salt Village is honoring them in, in that fashion. On the back table, you will see a flyer of two guest speakers we have for, for November. Uh, I'm excited about that. Uh, that should be interesting, uh, so I'm hoping that people come out to see that. Uh, next week, I will give you some more details for November eleventh, uh, but just be aware, veterans, whoever you are, wherever you are, you eat free. You eat first, uh, so, or maybe second, because our guests have to eat, eat first. But vets, you're gonna get, be able to get in line and, and...
Vets eat first.
Can I have vets? Well, see, I was, veterans, you will eat first. Pass the word, veterans will eat first. Our special guests will eat second. And those of you who are not vets, are not special guests, you eat third, uh, if there's anything left over. Uh, so we're, uh, we're getting, uh, we have some donations that are coming in for the, uh, food and festivities and, and stuff like that. Bloom Trail, as the flyer indicates in the back, will also be here. It was hard to get them here, uh, because there's been a changeover in Bloom Trail. Uh, but the Bloom Trail Junior, Naval Junior ROTC will be present, as they have for the last couple of years, and I think that's great, that we'll get a chance to honor our young people, who are doing things the right way. We, we hear about teenagers doing things the wrong way, here are teenagers doing things the right way, and I think we should come out and support them, and give them a pat on the back, and say, job well done. So, uh, any volunteers for Veterans Day, uh, let me know. I see two people in the audience now, uh, and I'm sitting next to one to my left, uh, who's volunteered, uh, that's my left. Oh, okay, so, um, any volunteers, uh, please come out and assist us, and this is for the veterans, uh, and we'll have veterans here, as we do every year, from other communities. And I heard that one veteran did go back and tell his elected officials, Salt Village did a good job, which I think is good. We, we need something positive. So come out, volunteer, hear the guest speakers, read the program, program will be together by then, uh, and I think you'll enjoy it. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Brewer?
On the first, third Friday of, uh, each month, the Big With Social Club is, have their session there from six to nine, uh, majority of them, uh, well, there's a challenge out there, so anybody who think they have skills, come on down and...
First and third, what?
First and third Friday from six to ten. So if you think you have skills, we're waiting on you.
Is, is that, excuse me, is that different?
No.
Because the times are different?
No.
No, it's the evening.
Okay.
Friday.
She said six to ten. Six AM to ten AM?
No, they say six AM to ten AM. You interrupted my, my session, let's go.
Excuse me.
I thought I was talking.
Trustee, trustee, excuse me.
The challenge is on first and third Friday from six to ten, be a Big With Social Club. Uh, since, um, May, I haven't requested some village documents, uh, that should, that should be part of public records. Now, to follow up on the village clerk's, um, announcement that she made, that, um, I requested these documents in verbally and write, in verbally, then in writing, and then I was, uh, had to do them in four years, because I wasn't getting the records that I needed in order to do my project. So with that being said, I did get response to those four requests. I, um, a lot of them, uh, weren't responding to, they say I got the information, but I don't have them, but, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that later. But just to let you know, I did get some information regarding those requests, and I asked for some different records for the doc, for the, uh, for the village, and I did get the records, so I could go out and finish with my project. Uh, second thing I want to know is that, since we've been here, and, uh, since May, we haven't seen any bills from the attorney. What I would like to see is how much the attorney's charging us for reviewing those four-year requests, where we have to return, uh, release the public records. So if you could give me a copy of those, uh, four-year requests, and I know there should be a lot of them in August and September, and I'd like to see how much we are being charged with attorneys reviewing those, uh, four-year requests. And I think the residents, not only I, I, I think the residents would like to know, um, how much it's gonna cost us to, uh, take a look at, you know, the attorneys take a look at those four-year requests when somebody asks them. So with that, that's the end of my comment.
Trustee Todd?
I just want to verify that next Tuesday, we do not have a meeting? It's the fifth Tuesday.
I didn't get a chance to get to meet yet, so...
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, I'll take that back. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, I just, as was, as was reiterated by trustee Todd, there will not be a meeting next Tuesday. The next meeting, um, there'll be a committee meeting, will be November seventh here at, um, seven o'clock. Uh, also, um, next Tuesday is Halloween, and, um, please be safe, and I just have a, um, suggestion, uh, for those that do not participate in Halloween, leave your lights on and put a sign out. That's easy, that's, that's all you have to do. If you're not gonna participate, put a sign out, no candy or whatever, but leave your lights on. And because the lights being on deter people from doing mischief. So, um, I just wanted to, to, to put that on there. And, um, everyone have a good week, and, and as far as, um, what you were talking about, trustee, um, Brewer, I'm, my office is always open Monday to Friday. I'm always here, at least from nine to five, sometimes a little later. So, uh, if you need something, it's not a matter, if you have to come to the meeting and ask for it, you can come and ask. And as far as the, the attorney bills, I have not paid attorney bills in a few months because I need explanation. Yes, they still charge, yes, they're charging for anything anyone calls for. That's why I put out the, um, memorandum to everyone about calling the attorneys, along with a sheet. So it's just that, at this particular point in time, we have the bills, and I'm sorry, I don't pay unless I know exactly what I'm paying.
I understand that, I see.
So it's just that, uh, pardon me?
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, I just, okay, but I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna let you finish.
I said, I understand, that's it.
Okay, every time I say something, you have something else. Then I'm just saying that, um, if there's any dispute or anything, um, yes, you can come, um, but, that being said, the employees of the village, I mean, if you need to talk to them, ten minutes is all I, you know, because they do have other things they have to do, they can't do research, or if you happen to do something, ask them to do it, they give it to you at a later date, they're gonna have to stop what they're doing right then and then take care of that. So just let you know, most, all the trustees do know that, so if they want to come in, they come in and they ask questions. Trustee Todd is there all the time, so she already, you know, she, she, she asks her questions and moves on. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. All in favor?
Aye.
Posers? Motion carried.